Ask Pastor Chris Hawks from Second Baptist Church if he would come up and provide the invocation for us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are grateful this afternoon to be able to come to you in prayer and to pray over this meeting. Thank you, Lord, for the opportunity that the City of Hamlet gives to this important time, Lord, where they're asking you to help in the decision-making, that your Holy Spirit would guide them in the important decisions that have to be made for our dear city. Lord, I pray for each item that comes up tonight, that, Lord, it would, every decision will be made, not only for what's best for us as citizens of Hamlet, but what's most beneficial to you. I pray for our mayor. I pray for our city manager. I pray for each council member, Lord. Pray for all the employees of our city. Lord, I thank you that we live in a city that still recognizes the importance of prayer, and we thank you. We thank you for Hamlet. We ask that you bless this meeting in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Hawks. Council item number three is adoption of the agenda. In adopting the agenda, I would ask that you place item number 12A under Mayor's comments for a closed session for personnel and attorney-client consultation.
Make a motion. We approve the agenda with 12A added.
Second.
And a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. Okay. Council item number four is approval of the consent agenda. What are your wishes on that? Got a motion and a second. Any further comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose likewise. We move along to item number five. Comments, if we have anyone tonight who has comments for the council. Come on up. Come on up to the... Mr. Taylors, good to see you this evening.
Good evening. My name's Robbie Taylor, and I thank the Lord for letting me be here tonight.
All praise to the God.
Yes. I've had a rough few years, but I'm still here. Still a little feeble. I hadn't got over it yet, but I want to thank my wife. She didn't come, but she's been, she's been a rock for about four years. She's had to really take care of me. She's really sacrificed a lot, and she just, uh... She just does a lot. And this weekend, this is the relevant, but it'll be our 50th anniversary.
Awesome. Congratulations.
Yeah. I'd like to take her somewhere nice if y'all got any donations. I tell her we might go to McDonald's, so I might need a little cash. But Chief Martin, I worked for him a long time. Oscar's a good friend, neighbor. Jesse, worked with him when he was at the Hamlet Police. Trooper Bayless, mayor, a good friend. Always has been. Abby, I don't know. I've been knowing her a long time. She ran for council and then she ran for mayor, and she's always been an asset for the city, I think, and the people. MREs I don't know real well, but I watch council on TV, the meeting, and I believe he's a man that stands for what he believes in. If I get too wobbly, I have to get secretary. The real reason I'm here is to thank the Hamlet Fire and Rescue for coming out to my house in September. I was having significant health problems, so my wife called 911. I was having trouble breathing, and in less than one minute, I seen a police car pull up, and it was Dalton Millen, and he could have easily rode on by, but he brought a lot of comfort to me and my wife. Asked me questions and telling me stuff till they got there, and it was just a couple minutes they were there. The level of compassion they showed me was unmatchable. Many people think they do it for the pay, but these guys were on a mission. One of the guys, when they got me in an ambulance, one of the guys was giving me aspirin. One was putting oxygen on me. One was doing my blood pressure. And even the fire chief was throwing an IV. Makes you feel good when they all, they worked so good together. It was unbelievable. But anyway, got me to the hospital and had pneumonia, and they didn't want no part of me. So I traveled here for eight days on antibiotics and oxygen. I am generally, genuinely proud of the Hamlet Fire and Rescue and the Police Department. I think they do a good job for a small city. I think council does a good job and city manager. For what you have to work with, I think you do good. And I hope I don't miss anyone, but I'm... Call Richard Lassiter to come up. And the fire chief. Just wait a minute. And Carlton Gany. Dan Ashfield. And Dalton Millen. Richard Lassiter, my family, and I think you're one of the best EMTs around. Richard actually come back and checked on me a couple times at the hospital. Thank you. I want to thank the fire chief for coming to my house to help care for me. Carlton Gany, your professionalism and ability were amazing. Thank you, Dan Ashfield. Your compassion and care were awesome. And Dalton Millen, as I said before, I don't think he'll ever know how much he meant to me and my wife, giving us comfort and just making us feel a little better until everybody got there. You know, I know firsthand that God's still in the miracle, making business. In Philippians 4:13, I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me. So that's it. I've got a card for these guys.
Thank you for that. Thank you so much. And I want to thank you personally, Robbie, for being a great, good neighbor. Thank you.
You don't see much of him.
No, I don't. Thank you. Thank you.
You know, these guys over at Fire and Rescue, they go 24/7, and it's, you know, they have tough days, tough nights, but it's always good to have somebody come in and tell a story on it, so thank you so much. Thank you. Do we have anyone else that has anything for the council tonight? If you do, please come forward. Okay. This time we'll close the comments. Do we have folks here tonight from hospice? Please come forward. Please come up to the stand.
Good evening. I'm Lisa Lucky, the volunteer outreach coordinator.
My name is Linda Russell. I'm the outreach and volunteer assistant.
Okay. Come a little closer to the microphone.
I'm Freda Fencham, one of the on-call LPNs.
It's nice to have you all here tonight in recognition of the National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. Whereas for more than 40 years, hospice has helped provide comfort and dignity to millions of people, allowing them to spend their final months at home surrounded by their loved ones. And whereas the hospice model involves an interdisciplinary, team-oriented approach to treatment, including expert medical care, quality symptom control, and comprehensive pain management as a foundation of care. Whereas beyond providing physical treatment, hospice attends to the patient's emotional, spiritual, and family needs, and provides family services such as respite care and bereavement counseling. Whereas since its conception, the hospice benefits holistic approach has helped patients prepare for and face death, and their loved ones carry on supported in the wake of it. Whereas a palliative care improves quality of life and offers relief from pain can be provided at any time during an illness, and hospices are some of the best providers of community-based palliative care. Whereas in an increasingly fragmented and broken healthcare system, hospice is one of the few sectors that demonstrates how healthcare can and should work at its best for its patients. Whereas 1.72 million Medicare beneficiaries living with lifetime, with life-limiting illness, and their families receive care from the nation's hospice programs in communities throughout the United States in the year 2020. Whereas hospice and palliative care organizations are advocates and educators about advanced care, planning that helps individuals make decisions about the care that they want. Whereas the central philosophy of hospice care puts patients first, ensuring a coordinated and personal-centered approach to care, protecting patient choice and access to individualized services based on a patient's unique care needs and wishes. Whereas given our universal mortality, hospice is a valuable benefit for all Americans and their loved ones. Now therefore, being resolved that I, Bill Bayless, mayor, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the City of Hamlet, do hereby proclaim November of 2023 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, and encourage citizens to increase their understanding and awareness of care at the end of life, discuss their end-of-life wishes with their families, and observe this month with appropriate activities and programs. And witness herof, I've signed this.
On behalf of Richmond County.
Do we have representatives here tonight from Sam West and the family? Please come forward. This is indeed a pleasure. This is honoring Sam West and inductee National Shag Hall of Fame. Whereas Sam West resides in Ham... Whereas Sam West resides in Hamlet, North Carolina, and whereas Sam began dancing at age nine, and whereas in 2004, Sam and his wife Lisa began the Shag Time Dance Team, the first full-time junior team to compete and perform exhibitions to promote Carolina Shag. And whereas Sam and Lisa were named the winners of the Sophisticated Swing Division at the U.S. Open Swing Dance Championship in 2010, 2012, and 2016. And whereas Sam and Lisa were named Grand National Masters Champions in 2019. And whereas Sam and Lisa starred in a TV commercial where he uttered his famous line, "Tap, tap time." I don't know if I said that right. And whereas Sam has been teaching and promoting Shag throughout the United States, France, Spain, England, and the Netherlands. And whereas the City of Hamlet is proud to have Sam and Lisa, their children, and the entire West family representing Hamlet through dance for many years. Therefore, I, William Bayless, mayor of the City of Hamlet, along with the Hamlet City Council, do hereby recognize and extend our sincere congratulations to Sam as inductee into the National Shag Hall of Fame.
Thank you.
Give him a hand.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say something from a dear friend of mine who is deceased. DJ Kibo Davis used to refer to Sam as Crazy Legs. Thank you, Sam. You're very welcome. I enjoyed the entertainment this morning. Thank you.
I've already been, I've talked to him. I am going to do it. Is there anyone here tonight representing Felicia Gullidge family? I want you to know that I have spoken with them earlier today, and Tuesday is not a good night for Felicia to be here. And I advised her that we were going to read the proclamation tonight, and we would get the proclamation to her, and she and the sheriff were very appreciative of it. This is honoring Felicia Gullidge as Richmond County Schools Teacher of the Year. Whereas Felicia Gullidge graduated from Richmond Senior High in 1993. And whereas Felicia Gullidge resides in Hamlet, North Carolina, with her husband Sheriff Mark Gullidge and their daughter Carly. And whereas Felicia Gullidge began her journey into teaching at Richmond Community College from 1993 to 1995, earning her associate's degree. And whereas Felicia Gullidge continued her education at University of North Carolina at Pembroke from 1995 to 1998, where she obtained a degree in early elementary education. And whereas Felicia Gullidge then furthered her education at the University of North Carolina at Pembroke, completing her master's degree in elementary education in 2003. And whereas Felicia Gullidge has 25 years of experience in the field of education, during which time she achieved National Board Certification. And whereas throughout Ms. Gullidge's career, she has consistently shown as an educator of the highest caliber. Now therefore, I, William Bayless, mayor of City of Hamlet, along with the Hamlet City Council, do hereby recognize and extend our sincere congratulations to Felicia Gullidge as Richmond County Schools Teacher of the Year. Okay, next item of business. Mr. Christian, I believe you have someone for me.
Yes, I'd like to...
Presentation to City of Hamlet Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
Yep. I invite Daniel up to make a presentation. Okay, perfect. Well, thank you, council members. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, staff, and thank you for the public here tonight. I want to give a high-level presentation of the work we've been doing with the City of Hamlet's Comprehensive Plan, also known as All-Aboard Hamlet. Want to be cognizant of the public's time and of your time during this presentation, so we are going to keep it at a high level, but we can answer questions if they come up. This is looking for action tonight, most likely after a public comment, and this did receive a recommendation of approval from the planning board. So we'll talk about the Comprehensive Plan, what a Comprehensive Plan is for the benefit of the public and those here today. We'll go through the components at a high level, like the background research and the public engagement that was completed as part of this. And we'll talk about the recommendations in the future land use map that came out of this effort. My name is Daniel Rao. As I mentioned, I'm a project manager with Withers Ravanell. That is the consulting firm that has helped with this effort. I primarily lead comprehensive plans like this one, as well as parks plans, park system plans throughout North Carolina. The map on the right here is just for reference. It just shows some of the projects of similar scope that we've completed here. So the big question is, what is a Comprehensive Plan? Why does this matter for the City of Hamlet? Well, a Comprehensive Plan, you can think of as it is a long-range planning document, about 10 to 20 years out into the future for your community. It establishes the holistic vision for where Hamlet is in the future, and it can really be broken down into three basic questions. One, where are we now? Where are we today? To do that, we look at background research. We pull census data and analytics from the federal government. We look at existing documents and existing conditions. We did a site walk around town, for example. Question two, well, where do we want to be? This is where we've engaged your public. We've done visioning sessions with stakeholders. I've recognized some faces here today that we've worked with, and we had a steering committee that worked with us throughout the process to identify where does Hamlet want to be in the future. The final question is, well, how do we get there? And that's where we come in. We put forward recommendations and action items that move this plan and implementation towards that future vision that was established as part of this effort. These are generally accompanied by a future land use map, which this one is. I will cover that on a later slide. But the real key takeaway here, if nothing else, is that as of July 1st of 2022, per North Carolina General Statute 160D, the adoption and reasonable maintenance of a Comprehensive Plan like this one is required if a municipality wants to continue enforcing zoning. So it is a guidebook for the future, but it is also now a requirement from the state as of 2022. This is an outline of the plan contents. It very much so covers what we've already discussed. But just to give you an idea of the skeleton of what this plan looks like when you go through it, it starts with the introduction, basically what we've just talked through. What is this plan and why does it matter? We talk about the background research, the public engagement, and ultimately the vision and recommendations that come out of our work. So the first step is background research. This is the question one. Where are we today? As I mentioned, we look at demographic trends. We look at the population projections for the future. Is it declining? Is it increasing at a high rate? We look at race and ethnicity diversity. We look at age, income. A lot of factors go into this. What we're doing is we're going back 10 years to today and trying to identify if there's trends occurring. Is there something that we need to consider with Hamlet's future and this planning effort if there are trends? So we did see a declining population. We did see an aging population. Those get considered when we go towards plan recommendations and when we interact with the public. As I mentioned, as part of this as well, we do look at previous planning efforts. We look at what was adopted before. Here's a list of some of the items we looked at. We want to make sure that our efforts complement these processes and build upon them, so that these plans actually complement each other and implementation benefits both, and that we're working towards a common goal for the future of Hamlet. And finally, we look at community partners and facilities. We like to take inventory of what is in and around Hamlet so that we know what opportunities we have when we go to implementation, who can we reach out to, what facilities can we use, what facilities need to be enhanced. As part of this planning efforts, we did work with staff. We worked directly with Matt on some additional focus items. These are more unique to Hamlet and something that has been occurring, you know, in recent future. We've talked about sewer capacity and the limitations that poses for the city. We've talked about regional industrial growth occurring around the borders of Hamlet and what that means for Hamlet residents, businesses, and overall infrastructure, and then also intergovernmental relationships. How does Hamlet and its neighboring municipalities and the county interact? How can we improve those relationships and move forward with them? Once we established our base set of data and our understanding of Hamlet, we started public engagement. This really began with the logo and slogan here, "All-Aboard Hamlet", and I made sure I wrote this down because I wanted to credit the right person. This was Jean Newton's original slogan. Jeannie's original slogan, and she gave us permission to use this as part of this planning effort. This branding was incorporated into any public engagement that we conducted. We'd like to see this move forward as implementation occurs. These are successes for the All-Aboard Hamlet Plan. We also met with the steering committee. We met with them, I say, three to four times throughout this process. Really, when we did our initial kickoff meeting with the town, we actually invited members of the steering committee to join in that. We wanted to have those conversations early and often with those members. We conducted during that initial kickoff meeting a SWOT evaluation. Really, that stands just for strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. It's a way for us as consultants to come in and get kind of a 10, 15-minute exercise and really understand what some of the challenges and opportunities face this city. But throughout the process, members of the steering committee reviewed the draft chapters. They reviewed some of our public engagement materials, and they've kind of been our sounding board throughout the process. That group is made up of local business owners, I believe, planning board members, citizens. So they really just made up a cross-section of Hamlet stakeholders that we would rely on throughout this process. We conducted an online community survey to get a, you know, a blast out for public feedback, but we also hosted two public workshops throughout the process here in these chambers just to get face-to-face time with the community, hear their stories, and get their input. So what we heard was there was a big desire for the development of commercial facilities, the redevelopment of vacant facilities to fulfill commercial needs, tourism and entertainment. There was a desire to have things around after 5 o'clock in this community, and the desire to program some of these spaces that are getting dilapidated or underused. There was a question in the survey about, are you getting your needs met? And I think it's good to show that 72% of respondents felt they did have all of their basic needs met in Hamlet. I think the primary thing cited of those who said no was access to medical care or hospitals. So we used this public engagement to advise our planned vision goals. We brought this back with the steering committee, talked through the responses we got during all three of these public engagement opportunities. One other thing I'd like to note is we did host a funding exercise at one of the workshops. You'll see in the picture with the buckets there. We gave everybody Hamlet bucks, just $5 per person. Gave them, showed them buckets of things like economic development, trails, parks, et cetera. And the top three investments were in overall economic development, parks and recreation, and then downtown development. So we worked with the steering committee to synthesize what we heard from the public. We put forward draft vision statements to the public and got feedback. And ultimately, we landed with this vision statement for the All-Aboard Hamlet Comprehensive Plan. And this statement is really intended to be the guide for future development and the future of Hamlet. I'm going to read it out loud real quickly. "The City of Hamlet strives to be a safe, family-friendly community that invites each and every person to live, learn, work, and play. Hamlet will grow as a regional destination..." Hamlet will grow as a regional destination through the support of a vibrant downtown, thriving local economy and infrastructure, enhanced historic and tourist destinations, and diverse entertainment and recreation opportunities." That's a 10,000-foot view of the vision of where the future of Hamlet lies. But we need to measure this. We need actionable items and things that we can point to and say, we're moving in the right direction. So we set forth five goals that will be then tied back to the action items we'll discuss at the end, the actual implementation steps. These five goals are more specified into things like housing, infrastructure, and economic development. But we'll tie actions to these five goals to make sure that we are moving towards this vision. So let's talk about the future land use map and the recommendations of the plan. Before we begin, though, for the benefit of everyone here, I want to state that the future land use map, the map that is in this plan, is not the zoning map of Hamlet. The future land use map is merely intended to guide development decisions and function as a tool for council members, for the public, for developers, and for staff to understand where the trajectory of Hamlet is established. It does not regulate what you can do with your property. It is merely a vision for the future and something to make decisions based off of. Whereas a zoning map, that's what you can actually tie to your, what use you can have on your property. This is not that. This is just a guidebook for the future. So this is the future land use map for the Town of Hamlet. We did develop this with staff and the steering committee based on public feedback. We did put this forward to the public in our second workshop and received feedback, no, no disagreement or anything, mostly just approval or general comments. There are seven land uses outlined in this, and they will range from your bare bones, not really programmed land with your conservation and open space designations, mostly floodplains and following waterways, all the way up to your town core, which is your vertical mixed use. This is your downtown Hamlet, where almost anything can occur, all the way out to your industrial flex centers, pardon me, where your, you know, future industry might come into place. In addition to these seven land uses, there's also five gateways identified with staff. So in the plan, you'll note that for each of these land uses and for those five gateways, we are making recommendations on what types of land uses would be appropriate here and other considerations, so such as the gateway. We talk about opportunities for monumentation or signage saying, welcome to Hamlet. So let's talk about the recommendations. In the plan, we organize our recommendations, our action items, into 12 overarching objectives. These are a little bit more drilled down than the vision and goals, but they still are high-level, and we provide action items to actually detail out what occurs for each of these. But these are linked, I want to stress that these are linked directly back to our public engagement. We talked about the bucket with the dollars and the investments made there. So for that example, we saw economic development, parks and recreation, and downtown enhancement. Objective one, for example, within this is linking downtown commercial opportunities to the recreation opportunities at City Lake through streetscape enhancements and productivity along those corridors. That in turn has implications for economic development, programming those properties along the corridors. Parks and recreation, further cross-pollinating people walking between the downtown and City Lake. And downtown development going the other way, people coming from City Lake enjoying the downtown via this multimodal enhancement. So we really did tie what we heard from the public into these overarching objectives. We're now going to take a look at one of these objectives and show just an example of how action items and the actionable, implementable part of this plan ties into what we've already discussed. So let's look at number nine here, which is preserve historical downtown Hamlet. And I apologize, I'll read this. It is a little hard to see. But on the right here is the implementation matrix, and these are where each of these action items are detailed for each of these overarching objectives. So let's look at nine, preserve historic downtown Hamlet. That objective has four action items. We're just going to cover the first one. That action item is to establish a cultural advisory committee. This came from conversations with members of the Planning Board and the public in our second workshop. So what does this mean? Well, this, this cultural advisory committee was brought about in part of a concern about the lack of cultural relevancy with some of the materials in Hamlet and making sure that we're promoting some of this historical and cultural significance, figures and places of Hamlet. So the development of this committee could then promote items in the city like the John Coltrane or J. Kenneth Lee and promote those individuals. This committee can then further, another future action item for them is to integrate these features into the Seaboard Trail map, so that that is also part of this. And even in the future, they could do their own guided walking tour and integrate that in. That's one action item, just to highlight one element of an objective. Obviously, this is a big plan. There's a lot of objectives and a lot of action items. But just for clarity, I wanted to show how this feeds back up into the overall vision. You'll note in the matrix where each of these action items is detailed, there is a tie to the goals. So as mentioned, those five goals set about as part of that vision, we are tying each of these action items to make sure that implementation is feeding up towards that future vision. And also for the purposes of implementation, we do put forward a recommended phase, short-term being maybe one to four years, medium-term, five to seven, long-term, eight-plus, for example. So we do try and guide implementation and help move that process forward as this plan gets implemented after adoption. I know I've spoken a lot. I thank everyone for their time and patience with this, and I believe we would go to public comment?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How much will all this cost the city?
So we don't.
And finance, how much will this cost the citizens, the city?
Understood. So there's such a wide range of action items, some of them being zero cost, some of them being larger plans. We do not do a cost estimate for each of our action items, but we are working, you know, part of this is identifying funding resources. Each of the action items that is a larger pay, might be a larger cost. We do try and identify applicable grants that would support the development of that project. For example, that link downtown to City Lake, objective one, part of that was identifying a grant that would help pay for that planning effort, which we have actually secured and are working on that plan now at little to no cost to the city.
But, but each, each, each item will carry a cost for each, each one that's implemented. That suggestion, is that right?
So the, the example with the, with objective nine.
From one to nine, yes.
The advisory committee that we just talked through.
Yes.
As a recommendation, it won't have a cost associated with it.
There's no cost to it.
No, sir, because that's just a, that's a local stakeholder moving that item forward. That's volunteer time.
Yeah, but I understand there's no free ride, but when it comes up, it's going to cost something.
Right. So another example would be the Opera House. We do recommend rehabilitation of the Opera House, but part of that is identifying the funding and the grant work that would make sure that that cost is not just immediately burdened on the citizens of Hamlet.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay, at this time, council, I need a motion to vote on whether or not to approve the plan.
I make a motion to be tabled and more discussion about it.
Okay, I got a motion. Do I have a second? No second, the motion fails. Do I have another motion?
I move that we approve the plan as presented. It's gone through our steering committee. It's had two public workshops. We've had multiple steering committee meetings, and the public has had a chance to have input, and I think it's very thorough. And we implement it at our own pace. It's not a set of rules and regulations that somebody's going to stand on our authority. But as he said, it's required by the state. So I think a lot of thought and effort's gone into it, and I'd like to recommend that we approve it.
Okay, I've got a, I've got a motion. I got, I got a second. Further comments?
Mayor, before we vote, I'm just asking the attorney to double-check on if any other actions are necessary prior to the vote for the plan to be approved.
And I apologize for us interrupting you in the middle of your motion and vote, Ms. Covington, the mayor. I'm looking, and it's, it's a little unusual because the Comprehensive Plan isn't a binding ordinance, but our statutes under 160D say that you should follow the same processes mandated for zoning amendments. Matt's informed me that we provided proper notice in the newspaper. Is that correct? So really, the only thing to do would be to open and close a public hearing at this time. Because at that point, then, you know, everybody in the public would have had the opportunity to speak, and I think all your procedural details would be covered. So I apologize that I didn't mention that before, but I'm correcting that now.
Very good. Do I need to, we need to rescind the motion at this time?
I think you could just leave it, leave it on the table, and then just.
That's good.
Since no one has wanted to speak, you could just go through the formality of opening the hearing and then closing it if no one wishes to speak at this time.
At this time, we have an open hearing. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this plan, please come forward.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Yeah, I want to commend you all on the efforts. Thanks for putting it in. We got it at the end, but we got it. This is also a lesson in here when we put truly diverse input, what we can accomplish. We do not need a microcosm of the Chamber of Commerce dictating everything, suggesting for minor, minor amendment, where it had live, work, learn, play, let's insert pray. So that covers all faith communities and that mission. Also, equity in these contracts and in these costs that you referenced, councilmen, sellers, want to make sure that equity, minority and women businesses have been so long overlooked. It's time to fix that. It's time to, we know what, we know what to do. I don't even have to go through that. We know what to do. Let's do it. Also, with the City Lake, truth and reconciliation with that and the Opera House slash movie theater. Culturally, there's still some pain that exists, especially in many members in the black community of African-American descent. Times when they had to sit in the balcony and had to go to get concessions, they had to stand in the rain and get a half a serving that everybody else did. Things where the inclement weather and they would be called names by some folks who were kids now that became elders in the community now. South Africa was successful with Bishop Desmond Tutu, when they did the truth and reconciliation. There's been some drownings in that City Lake we don't talk about, but we know things have happened. Need some guidance. I can provide you some of the folks. And with this equity, with this truth reconciliation, and frankly, an apology may be needed from the City of Hamlet. With love, but with accountability. Some things have happened here. We do politeness. There've also been some things that need to be acknowledged and not just blessing the rail, just pushing it in the rug because you create resentment. And I was looking at the numbers even for this election that just passed. We got a national coming up, and it's traditional. Numbers are lower. But in leadership, and it's an opportunity, this is an opportunity for growth. We have to galvanize and include the community more. I also suggest we get a district system, so the folks can, even for you all running for office, it costs a lot to get to 6,000-plus people. But with the district, you're also getting a more structured area where folks get equal input. Still can have a mix of district and at-large like most places do. The areas that are lagging behind in the tier-one economy, since we're going economic-based a lot, tend to be the ones that don't have district systems. We needed in county commissioners. We saw what happened with the tax issue. We had input, and folks felt more strong and had to represent their district and manage that. I think that would have been an opportunity to have stuff, information more timely and in there. So be it across the board, be it the lake, be it the movie theater. The cultural advisory committee, I think people should be paid that go on it, and not just because I want to be on it, and I definitely want to be on it. I think I deserve it, and I think you all know that. And one last thing while I'm thinking about it, sidebar, Kenneth Lee, please make sure we put attorney Kenneth Lee. That guy was the, roughly from Charlotte Street, basically. Y'all have heard me talk about it. First black on the banking commission. If we're going to do economic development as a priority, let's make sure we get that. Started the first black save, black-owned federal savings alone in the entire state of North Carolina. We've got to acknowledge and show appreciation for that, not just during Black History Month, but every day. And with that equity, let's make sure we do real efforts. City manager, council, and making sure that this stuff gets there in the future, just like stuff we've had. And I say that, and I'm man enough. McQueen, you know, we've never had a personal issue, but the stuff we did, that shouldn't be happening. We should always be able to talk civilly in this place with passion, and passion is good. We should be passionate. This is where we live. Oh, and I forgot too, Daniel and Matt, if you all can also insert stay. We have live, work, learn, pray, and stay. A lot of retirees, they're coming back home. That's why we're seeing some of these changes in the demographics. And you all saw, the African-American population is over 40% in the projections. Is that reflective on all our boards, on all our committees, and all our business, and all our equity? We see percentages more women. Is that reflective? So let's make sure we do do that extra effort to make sure we get it right. And a lot of stuff was focused on downtown, and we know sometimes the other side of the tracks doesn't get recognized. It gets overlooked, but that's where a lot of the growth is coming from. Let's look at that side. We got a lot of tracks here, so if you want to talk to the other side, I'd be glad to talk with you. Want to make sure in future reference, in the breath of fresh air, this is 20 years later, and the accuracy part in there. McQueen, was not that in 16 years that you've been here that you reference. Matt knows when he first came about. When we first met, one of my first questions on that board was, where's our strategic plan? At least people did acknowledge that we didn't have one, so I'm glad to see we're off having one. And my birthday's July 1st, so that's how I always remember. Supposed to have these plans, just like the state budget. But I want to say too, sellers, I'm glad you're bringing up the finance part. But I also want to say, let's also give equity to the qualitative, not just the quantitative, the quality. I commend how you came to the Juneteenth. You saw quality that we do in here. You had been more recent, at least have been to some of the events that we do here. And remember, we do this out of our pocket. We don't get grant money for this. That one town where it got tabled, that's why you heard me cringe when you said table. They tabled the Coltrane Fest. What if I would have stopped? What if my family and my team would have stopped? We got to respect the grassroots. I'm glad you all caught it about the public comments because that is in process, so thank you all for that. But that's it, and thank you all.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything? If not, we'll close the time for the public. Now, we have a motion to approve the land use. I have a motion and a second.
Who is the second?
Maurice.
Maurice.
Thank you.
Do we have any further comments from council? If not, if not, we'll vote all in favor. Say aye.
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 All opposed?
Aye.
So four and one.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to item number 10, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, mayor. First of all, I'll keep my comments brief. I just want to thank everyone for coming out to the Seaboard Festival. A lot of volunteers put that together, including some of you all who volunteered that day and others who just enjoying the festivities, and that's, that's, that's okay too. But I particularly want to thank our staff that was there. It's a long day for us, blocking traffic, cleaning up the streets, making sure everybody's safe that day. There's a lot of energy that goes into that, and we couldn't do it without the good folks that we talked a little, a little bit about earlier. But it's a, often a thankless job, but I wanted to thank everyone who is a part of that and our, and our, what we do every day. Looking ahead, Thanksgiving, we are closed on the Thursday and Friday. Just so folks know, Thursday trash pickup will be moved to Wednesday. Just so folks know, Thursday trash pickup will be moved to Wednesday, businesses will be picked up on Tuesday, and they will only receive one pickup the week of Thanksgiving, the businesses will. They typically receive two. Couple of events upcoming, we're excited about our tree lighting ceremony on November the 27th, that's the Monday after Thanksgiving, that's at 6:00 PM. And also the upcoming parade of lights on December the 7th, that is also at 6:00 PM. And I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
And by anything for the manager at this time? Okay, if not, we'll move at item number 11, comments from council, Mr. Martin.
Well, it's that time of year again, it's closing in pretty fast. I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving coming up next week, and we have our newly-elected mayor in attendance tonight, and I'd like to congratulate her on her victory as the mayor of the city of Hamlet. Other than that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sellers?
I'd like to thank all the attendees coming and for the reports they gave, and I'd like to compliment in what Robbie Taylor said about our fire and rescue school people. Thank you very, very much for a great job, and for our police department. Thank you, brother Gerard Morris, for your comments and interest in what's going on and what could be. And I wish everyone a happy and a safe holiday in Thanksgiving, and be sure to give thanks from whom all blessings flow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Stewart?
Yes, Mr. Martin beat me to it, but definitely congratulating our new elected mayor, Ms. Amy, thank you, and congratulations to you on that. Mr. Morrison, thank you for keeping John Coltrane name alive, the Eduvocation Festival here in Hamlet, we appreciate that. And to all the citizens of Hamlet that's entrusted in me to continue to serve, I thank you so much.
We'll see it.
Ms. Covington?
Well, I would like to say that I thought the Seaboard Festival was a fantastic success this year, and I know a tremendous amount of work goes into that, and I want to thank everybody who took part in it. It's a year-long planning event, and I hope more people will step up and volunteer to be a bigger part of that year next year because we need local input, we need people to step up and help out. I'd also like to thank everyone for coming out, being involved in the election last Tuesday. It was a moderate turnout, it was a beautiful day, had a lot of fun, and I appreciate you were giving me the opportunity to serve you for another four years. Also, excuse me, I would like to compliment our fire and rescue division. I hear the kinds of comments from people every day, they serve our population at a time when they are their most vulnerable, when they probably feel as helpless as they ever do. And they indicated, Daniel indicated when he gave us that, that one of the primary concerns was the lack of close hospital care and medical care, and we could not have a better link between our citizens and medical care than we do in the Hamlet Fire and Rescue. And I want to say thank you.
Mr. McQueen?
Yeah, probably repeating a lot of stuff, but guys at the fire department, great job on the call with Robbie and everything else y'all do. And I'll just reiterate that direct to the police department as well, to the folks that we recognize tonight, Felicia Gullidge and her honor, and Mr. West. Also got very good field goal kickers in your family too, from a Raider fan, very appreciative of that. Seaboard Festival, like was just mentioned, that whole program is put on by about four or five people that work all year.
All volunteer.
All volunteer. The city has stepped up, and Michelle down at the depot and all her staff and everybody, and they help out with that, but you don't understand the hours that go into that for that one day of fun and excitement that comes to the town. That means a lot, so if anybody's wanting to volunteer, get up with Matt, and get up with me, whoever, and we'll head you in that right direction. Want to thank Matt for developing and coming up with the plan, selecting the folks to be on that committee, great job. It all looks good, but like Oscar said, that vote doesn't make it happen. We're dealing with budgets every year to where we have to not buy police cars, not buy fire trucks. We're having to budget and buy our firemen the air tanks on a two to three a year basis. A lot of expenses come up, and everybody thinks that, you know, property taxes do that, when property taxes probably is less than 20% of how we fund the budget. There's going to be some challenges where we can make some headways, I'm excited to see that. Some of the things that were up there were big-ticket items, that's been on the books for 20 and 30 years. And while everybody up here would love to see everything done, it's going to have to make sense financially, just putting that out there. I mean, but the fact that you did come up with this idea to have this plan was huge and pivotal, and it did get all of Hamlet involved in the process, and that's a good thing. Just to get people to come, well, I mean, y'all come to the meetings, there's nobody here typically, but you had folks at these meetings with this land use program, and that is a big deal for our town. And where we can do things, we'll do them. And I know this board will work together to tirelessly make sure we prioritize what needs to be done and get done what we can get done with the means that we have. Other than that, I can't speak enough to the staff and the city. We had a pretty significant water break not long ago, and there was a lot of negative talk about that, but while we were at home or out doing what we were doing, we had employees standing in the middle of the road on Highway 74 for a day to fix something that's probably well over 100 years old. And that's something to be proud of there, that we got that back up, and you're never going to stop those things from happening, but it's how we answer it, and it's how we try to move forward positively. And I just want to thank everybody that took part in that, as well as every employee that we have. Whenever I first ran for council, it was to be an advocate for the employees, and we have some of the best folks here in our town, in all departments, it's not just a few. The people in every department take pride in what they do, and these guys that tell you, ladies, they don't do it for the money because we're not able to pay them near what they're worth. And what people don't even recognize is we don't even pay them what they could make if they went seven miles down the road. They want to work here because they love Hamlet, and I'm so happy that somebody came and talked about how good of a job y'all do. That just made me very proud, and that's all I have.
Mayor, I'd like to say one more thing. The fact that Trey's here, I thank you so much. Oftentimes, I think with fire, rescue, and police departments, we don't think of customer service. And I know with Trey and with when the police chief came, I made it very clear with him that, you know, we provide a service. We know in our country, so many people, depending on the crime, they still need to be treated in a humane way. And a lot of times, people are treated in an inhumane way because of the crime that they commit, but we still provide a service. And I made it clear with him that I wanted our police department to provide excellent customer service to people, no matter what the case is. And I just want to thank both chiefs for that. It seems that that is happening, and we don't want to bring what happens across our country to Hamlet. We don't want it anywhere, quite frankly, but thank you guys for treating people with respect, no matter what. So thank you so much.
To sit and look at this comprehensive land use plan is kind of discouraging because for the last number of years, everything that's up there, we've looked at, everything that's up there, we've talked about, but the money was not there to do it. And, you know, it just breaks your heart that you can't do everything that you want to do. And I think the council's doing a fantastic job of managing the budget. This year, there were several items that were just badly needed that were purchased, so thank you for doing that. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Unlike Mr. McQueen, the water department guys, that was a big issue, but you know, they're out there every day digging a hole somewhere. We've got a darn water leak somewhere every day, and, you know, you wonder if your job's ever going to get caught up, but anyway.
Job security.
Yeah, there you go. Anyway, remember the tree lighting and the parade. Also, I'd like to thank or congratulate Mayor Gwynn for winning the election. I am looking forward to retirement, I've been at it long enough, and I'm sure she'll do a great job. And that's all that I have at this time. And council, I would ask for a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel issue and attorney-client privilege.
Second?
A motion from Oscar and a second from Abby. We stand in closed session. Thanks again for everybody coming tonight. Mr. West, thank you.